To a special meeting right here, Virginia Beach City Council. Honorable members of City Council, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Northam declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19. Because of the catastrophic nature that declared emergency, it is impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum of the City Council in a single location. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, Virginia Code 2.2-3708.2A3, Virginia Code 15.21413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on March 31st, 2020, we are hereby called for a special meeting by electronic communication means of the Virginia Beach City Council, Thursday, April 30th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. In accordance with Virginia Code 2.2-3708-2A, this special meeting by electronic communication means will be held virtually with City Council members participating via video/audio conference. The purpose of this special meeting is for the City Council to hold a workshop to discuss the proposed fiscal year 2020/21 operating and capital improvement budgets. The special meeting will be broadcast on cable TV, www.vbgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special meeting via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. This meeting is being called by three council members: City Council Member Abbott, District 2 Kempsville; City Council Member Moss at Large; and Council Member Tower, District 6 Beach. Madam Clerk, we have the roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jessica Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Berlucci.
Present.
Councilmember Barbara Henley.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis Jones.
Present.
Councilmember John Moss.
Present.
Councilmember Guy Tower. Member Wilson advised that she had a prior obligation would not be able to attend. Councilmember Sabrina Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jim Wood.
Present.
Mayor Dyer.
Present.
All present except for Ms. Wilson.
Okay, at this point, we will open the floor for discussion on the 2020 and 2021 operating and capital improvement budget projects.
Can we go over the instructions first?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry about that, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. This is City Clerk Amanda Barnes. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note this meeting is being recorded. To ensure the live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Council discussion: It is important that council members hold their comments until recognized. The City Clerk will recognize the council members in the order which they raise their virtual hand. It is also important that each council member lower their virtual hand at the conclusion of their comments and re-raise to make additional comments. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? Seeing no one raised their virtual hand, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, at this point, we are open for discussion.
Councilmember John Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Clerk. I won't be speaking on behalf of Mr. Tower and Councilmember Abbott, for the three of us that called the meeting, but there is a reason why we called it. We certainly felt that the revenue forecast that we received that was on Page 3 of the memorandum we got from the city manager, Acting City Manager, on April the 10th, 2020 certainly didn't align with any reputable economist or any forecast coming out of head fund, and it certainly hasn't improved. Most of you probably know that GDP for the second quarter was down 4.8%, that in fact, that consumer spending was down 7.2%, and income was down 3.1%, largely driven by just the last half of March. We're expecting unemployment to peak at 25% sometime this summer, across, that's a macro number, and end up at about 12%. That's the numbers in the recently released Congressional Budget Office Report of last Friday. So certainly, we've all heard independently from businesspeople at the oceanfront and elsewhere, that not only are they not able to pay their rent, they won't be any better able to pay their property taxes due on August 1st any more than they're able to not be able to pay them on the 5th of June, and that we can anticipate that that situation will not substantially subside over, at least through the end of the year. When you look at, we've also heard all of them almost unanimously across those people impacted are asking us not to increase the real estate rate. They understand they got to pay the fair share, there's a bill, but they're asking us to hold those value, the amount paid flat, can't guarantee that because assessments vary, but certainly, we could maintain the lower rate, which would cost about $15 million of offsets. Additionally, we've heard from residents who are extremely hit hard by this particular thing, and their ability to recover is going to be long-term. And then, when you look at the economic statistics from the markets from which we draw tourism from, that's going to be very competitive, because why? Their incomes are also being hard-hit, they're unemployed, and therefore, the number of people who are eligible to travel, even of the best of conditions financially, are going to be hard-pressed to do so, even if they are driving by car. So we're in a very probably transactional revenue reduction basis. We all probably know that the governor held back $853 million in the first biennium of his budget and the amendments. He held back another $1.2 billion, and the second part of the biennium in his budget is unallocated, meaning he, it might be appropriated, but in fact, the agencies don't have that money to spend. And in the first year, which is the year we're talking about here, that was just a little bit over a 3% reduction in those, his executive department expenditures. Meanwhile, and you look on in the same document received on April 10th, 2020, the top-line reduction in the total budget, 2.2 billion and some change, represented just a 1/10 of 1% reduction from the current appropriated budget. The bulk of the $67.3 million, if you look on Page 3 of that document, if you have it handy, he said he decremented the budget, $67.3 million. Well, that's correct, from his proposed budget. Well, you can't deduct money you never had, we didn't have that $64 million. So when you look at the actual decrease over the current-year budget, it was $2.3 million, which is one, just a little over 1/10 of 1%. I don't think any of us believe, when you look at going back to the revenue collections, and he went off his growth, not off the base, he was looking at percent change in revenues would be 3%. And if you go back, and you can see that on Page 3. I think we're not going to collect that revenue. I don't think those performances that he has there on the right are accurate. And if we hear from the business community and citizens, I realize the memo that we received from Mr. Wood, and I certainly respect the fact that he's trying to find where six votes might be, but my job is to find out where we can provide relief to businesses and residents in the community, and I don't think we get there with the proposed reconciliation, because it starts off at a false premise of how much revenue we're going to collect. And it doesn't address, when the people came out and spoke all night, and I realize this format does not really facilitate people's participation, but I can't believe that you aren't hearing from the same magnitude of businesses and residents that I am, that tax relief is definitely in order, but we can't have tax relief until we first know and agree on what we believe we're going to collect this year, and how much we think we're going to spend this year to make sure that we all agree on what is actually a realistic ending fund balance number. But, and then, we can talk about how we want to spend it. If in fact, we want to use it for tax relief, because that's one-time money, that ending fund balance is, but if you go and look at the financial report dated April 17th for the year ending, excuse me, for the period ending March 31st, and on Page 3 at the very back of the appendices, when they do the labor summary, at the bottom, it talks about what we expect to be the variance between what we're going to spend on labor and benefits, and what we're, what we actually budgeted, and that total number at the bottom on that page is $43.4 million, that's million with an M, $1 million would be the variance between what we've actually spent, the projection to spend between April 1st and 30 June. Of that amount, and I don't have the breakout, $12.3 million is in the general fund portion, I'm sure that means unrestricted fund, and then, another $29.1 million is in other city funds. So we need to really understand that, we have to ask ourselves if that is really a true factor. Where did that money go in the revised budget place? Because in reality, that should be money that we should be talking about, either one for one-time tax relief, or looking for other things that we want to go after. So in the, okay, the paper that I shared with council members, I think our first task today, before, you do this in a very methodical fashion, is first, do we agree on the number that we're going to end the year with and the revenues, and have a more realistic look about the real estate revenue we probably won't collect, and the personal property tax we won't collect, and then, look at our expenditures, so we'll know how much ending fund balance we have carried forward, and then, we can look at this revenue projection that's on Page 3 of this 10-April memo, which is the one we're still working from, as I can best determine, and simple work from the FY '21 side of the column versus the revised, and well, then, we'll look at what we spent to date, and then, we'll walk off offsets to pay for the things that we want. Now, I do want to, since it's here, and just to briefly go over a couple things that was in this reconciliation letter that we received as a proposed, which really offers no tax relief, let me just state that upfront, no tax relief, no offset of the stormwater management plan, nothing responsive to the businesspeople and citizens that we heard and spoke the other evening, a majority of which were asking for tax relief and to reduce the real estate tax rate, but that didn't get in the reconciliation budget, but all the requested ads did, which I guess is the bias of government that can confiscate revenues, but if we can't reduce the tax burden on the people who generate the revenue, I found it somewhat peculiar that we would then absorb and pass on to the taxpayers for having to pay the employee's share of health insurance. I mean, that would be nice to do, and if we're reducing taxes on our citizens and on our businesses, then I think that was true, but to pass on and not be able to provide tax relief, but to pass a cost on to the taxpayers when they're unemployed and may not even have insurance, seems, and we had originally had in his original budget, them paying 2% of that 5% cost, seems to me to be a little tone-deaf to the people who are talking to us. Also, we have on any given day, and I've talked about this often, over 500 positions vacant, but while we are reducing some positions, and I think we had a net increase, if I read this correctly, of a net increase of 58, I'm wondering why we're not freezing at least half of those and deferring the other half till after January to be filled, till we can have a better picture on our revenues. So when I look at this, to me, it's a proposal that, in good times, might be something we could all work with, but when we're experiencing the financial stress that our businesses are incurring, and they can't even pay their bills, and many residents can't either, and they're having to take on credit card debt that later suppresses their spending later, then it looks like we're working in a different world than the people that we serve. So my purpose, I was hoping today, was not looking for how to get to reconciliation, because I think it's going to take several workshops to do that, but in fact, to be more methodical than we have been, and have us agree to what the revenues we think we're really working with, and what expenditures can fit within that. I know some people believe that we have to adopt this budget by the 12th of May, that's an artificial construct. Why, the state statute does say that we should adopt the school board budget, or budget for the school board, by the 15th of May. The statute does not provide any penalty for not doing so, and in fact, a number of communities in the past, Norfolk and Wrighton, other places, Richmond, have not adopted a budget by that time, because what? They had a lot of homework to do, and certainly, if there was ever a taking more time, it would be then. And in fact, this is the very first workshop that we have held since we received the budget on 25 March, and then, an update on 10 April, and if it not for the, I thank Councilman Guy Tower and Councilman Jessica Abbott for calling this special meeting, we wouldn't be having a workshop until a week before the current schedule to adopt the budget. And I offer that we should set a date later than that, because I think it's going to take a little bit more time than the 12th of May to, for us to get and walk through the priorities, and we have got to, in my opinion, and I'll, if we, any responsible budget has to be providing tax relief, which means lowering tax rate to the lowered rate, we ought to try to achieve that and know what it takes to do that. We absorb the increase in the stormwater management fee by offsets, and within the expenditures that, within the revenue stream we think is going to come in, and pay our people first, and then, take care of the onboard people the best we can, but let's not be thinking we should be bringing on 540 more, creating new positions at a time when our revenue streams are uncertain. As I shared with you, almost every major corporation has canceled their forward guidance, and why is that? Because of how uncertain the future is about their revenues. So, and they're also doing what? They're reducing their capital expenditures. There's nothing in here about deferring the dome site, deferring 17th Street, and there's been businesspeople who have proposed that as a way to provide revenue streams for tax relief. So I think we have a lot of hard work to do. We called this workshop today to give us a chance to talk to each other and to move beyond and to build upon the staff input, but the staff recommendation and the reconciliation budget as proposed, to me, is not responsive to the expectations that I have heard, both from the business community and from residents across the broad spectrum. They think that somehow that we are insulated from the reality. I know that's not true, but if we don't do something different from what we have, and the economy doesn't come out, why we, on a hope, and hope is not a strategy, then we'll be having some very ugly discussions in the very near future. And I thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional comments by council members? If so, raise your virtual hand. Councilmember Jessica Abbott.
Thanks, glad to see everybody on a dreary, dreary day. I wanted to see if we could, I don't, I'd like, Councilmember Wood sent out that letter this morning about reconciliation, and I haven't had a real moment just yet to give it a hard look. I'm interested in talking about the letter a little more in greater detail, and then, I did really want to talk about, you know, I'm, I am concerned a little bit about revenue, I'm also concerned about giving some relief to businesses but not giving relief to residents. I do think we need to include that in our reconciliation. I agree with John, I do think we need to come to a decision on, are we comfortable with where revenues are being forecasted, and if we are, then, you know, go through and select what we want to spend the money on. But I, you know, I don't know, I don't, we haven't really had a discussion, and I know this is not an ideal format for this, since we have to kind of think about what we want to say and then raise our hand, versus sometimes when we're around the table, we can kind of just jump in when we start, when we start to have our thoughts, but I have some ideas of, I would, I'm, I sent a letter to Tom, our city manager, on the 23rd about various CIPs that I think might be starting points for trying to provide that relief to residents. I'm still waiting to hear back if any of the ones that I sent him are feasible, I'm happy to share that with you all. There's a lot of, a lot of the CIPs on the list that I asked Tom about have, you know, the word various in front of them, so those seem like ones, places that we might be able to start looking at first, since they're not specifically line-item projects that need money, but I do think we really need to take a hard look, and bigger picture, I think maybe there's some sense to only appropriating some of our budget, that way, we're not having a conversation in the fall when people aren't able to pay their real estate tax in August. I'm, from what I'm hearing from residents, just like clients that call into my office, a lot of them are anticipating not making their personal property and their real estate taxes payments, a lot of them are not in escrow, so I'm just concerned about that, so I hope we can have a more of a discussion on all of those topics.
Vice Mayor Jim Wood.
If we want to talk about the reconciliation letter, I feel like I probably should read it into the record, and that's, I guess, if the mayor wants me to do that, I'm happy to do that. I know everybody on council has seen it, so it'll probably take 10 minutes or so to read it into the record for the people viewing, and I'd just stand by to see if the mayor wants me to do that.
Let him know again, please.
Yep, good to go, Jim.
Want to get up and get something to drink or something, feel free. So this is a letter, April 30th, 2020, members of City Council, subject FY 2021 operating budget and CIP reconciliation. Dear City Council Members, On March 24th, 2020, the Acting City Manager presented his original proposed FY 2021 operating budget and capital improvement program due to the economic impacts of COVID-19 on our city. The City Manager provided a revised FY 2020/21 operating budget and CIP on April 10th, 2020. The revised budget outlined reductions associated with decrease in tax revenue as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and return services to FY 2019/20 levels. These reductions are highlighted in green on Attachment A. As we begin the new fiscal year with economic uncertainty, it is critical that the City Manager and staff provide monthly financial updates on revenues and expenditures. The revised FY 2021 operating budget has created a great deal of flexibility, however, it is possible that additional City Council action could be required should revenues decline below current estimates. To provide extra flexibility and preserve the city's cash position during these uncertain times, it is recommended that expenditures within the following capital improvement projects be placed on hold until further notice by City Council. CIP 3-174, operations facilities renovations, that's $30 million. CIP 8-025, beach replenishment 2, and that's $2.5 million. We also recommend that the City Manager continue the hiring freeze and continue limiting expenditures to essential services only as we begin the new fiscal year. As noted on Page 22 of the April 10th letter, the City Manager's revised budget provided a balancing strategy for most funds, however, additional analysis was required to determine the best strategy for balancing both the Tourism Investment Program, TIP, and the Tourism Advertising Program, TAP, funds. These funds are projected to have their original FY 2021 revenue estimates reduced by a combined total of $16 million. Balancing these funds through expenditure reductions alone would result in almost a complete elimination of current services. Provided through the TIP Fund, programs such as beach maintenance, trash collection, beach events, et cetera, and a reduction of 25% in TAP Fund advertising and marketing efforts. As the economy begins to reopen, TIP and TAP programs and services will be essential to the recovery of the local tourism industry. For that reason, it is recommended that the primary balancing strategy of the TIP and the TAP funds include the use of $14.8 million of fund balance from the TIP Fund. Of this use, $9.8 million will be appropriated within the TIP Fund, and $5 million will be transferred to the TAP Fund. Additional funding within the TAP Fund will allow the city to not only maintain current services, but also enhance marketing and advertising efforts across the city. The enhanced marketing and advertising campaign plan will occur in two phases. The first phase includes an additional $2 million between now and July 1st. The second phase will include an additional $1.6 million appropriated on July 1st as part of the FY 2021 operating budget. The proposed fund balance of the TIP Fund at year-end FY 2021 is $1.7 million, or 4% of the following year's revenue estimate. This results in an overall increase to the net budget change as reflected in the April 10th presentation, and these recommendations are highlighted in blue on your attachment. Also noted within both the letter, Page 22, and presentation, additional refinements were needed as a result of department-specific revenue reductions. These reductions result in the additional elimination of 24 FTEs and are highlighted orange on the attachment. In local, correction, in total, the City Manager's revised FY 2021 operating budget includes a net reduction of 58.02 FTEs when compared to the FY 2019/20 budget. The modification of the FY 2021 revenue estimates resulted in a reduction of $20.4 million in local revenue shared with the schools. On Page 22 of the April 10th letter, as a part of the process moving forward, it was noted that the city staff was continuing to work with school staff to modify the schools' FY 2021 operating budget accordingly. On April 28th, the school board reduced approximately $28 million in their FY 2021 operating budget. In order to incorporate the budget amendment adopted by the Virginia Beach School Board, the following adjustments were necessary. One, reduce the transfer from the city's general fund by $20,372,434, and reduce estimated revenue from the Commonwealth by $6,926,614. These reductions in revenue were offset with the elimination of following appropriations: A, $19,532,825, originally improved for a 0.5% step increase and a 3.0% cost-of-living adjustment. B, elimination of 69.55 FTEs and $4,492,077 in related salaries and operating supplies. C, $2,774,146 in other operating costs within the school operating fund. D, $500,000 transferred to the schools' capital improvement program. Number two, reduce school CIP project 1-107, Princess Anne High School replacement by $500,000 with a corresponding reduction in pay-as-you-go means of financing. The City Manager's revised FY 2021 operating budget retained several proposals that should help in retiring, hiring, and retaining our valued workforce, including increasing the hybrid employee paid time off accrual of an additional 1.5 days per year, and expanding the maximum allowable carryover by six days. Two, expansion of the city's maternity-paternity leave program from three to six weeks. After listening to public input at the public hearings and via email, as well as discussions with City Council members, it is recommended that the City Manager's revised FY 2021 operating budget and CIP as reflected on Attachment A be adopted with the following adjustments. One, reinstatement of the original proposed initiatives to implement recommendations of the 2018 disparity study. This increases the Department of Finance's budget by $366,541, including one additional position. Two, reinstatement of the following compensation initiatives previously approved by City Council: Year 2 of public safety workforce development, Year 2 Phase N of moving supervisors to their mid-range pay point. Through these initiatives, the city will continue to address its critical compensation needs and continue to build off previous efforts to address compression across the city. A compensation reserve of $1,188,714 in the general fund is established to address these initiatives. Elimination of a 2% increase in city employee health premium, insurance premium rates scheduled to take place on January 1st, 2021. City employee premium rates will remain at the same level as 2020 health insurance premium rates. The schools also eliminated their 2% planned increase. rates. The schools also eliminated their 2% planned increases. Since both the city and schools will be eliminating pay increases, we believe this will help reduce the financial impacts to city and school employees with no pay increases planned for FY 2021. The total impact to the health insurance fund is approximately $630,000. The 3% employer increase remains in both the schools and city budget. Four, provide personal property tax relief for volunteer, emergency medical services and volunteer fire personnel. To provide this tax relief, qualifying personal property will be taxed at a lowered rate of one millionth of one cent on each $100 of assessed valuation. This reduction will result in the projected loss of $60,000 personal property tax revenue. Five, reinstatement of the original proposed funding of $7,000 to the Atlantic Wildfowl Heritage Museum and $15,000 to the Virginia Beach Surf and Rescue Museum. Six, move the 135,000 Museum of Contemporary Arts education grant from the Department of Cultural Affairs to non-departmental organization grants. This will provide additional transparency in the future budgeting of this grant initiative. Seven, even during these tough economic times, it is critical to address the safety and security of our employees and citizens. We recommend beginning the implementation of the Hillard Heinz recommendations, including the centralization of human resources and establishing a security office as follows. A, four human resource positions to begin the phase centralization of human resource functions. This increases the department's operating budget by 397,373. B, one security office position to begin conducting facility security assessment needs. This increases the office of emergency management's operating budget by 64,504. Starting these two initiatives in FY 2021 will allow staff to determine the type of and amount of resources necessary to further implement the recommendations. If revenues are performing favorably based on mid-year review by staff, additional consideration will be given to funding more of these recommendations in FY 2021. Number eight, increase funding contribution to the African American Cultural Center by $50,000. Nine, based on updated fuel cost projections, additional savings are likely to occur in FY 2021 due to lower fuel prices. General fund budget of fuel costs are reduced by 299,132. Ten, increase general fund B dot roadway maintenance funding by 1,850,000. The FY 2021 Commonwealth of Virginia's budget reflects a 13% increase for financial aid for city road maintenance resulting in the estimated increase of funding. Estimating this additional revenue to the Department of Public Works creates capacity to redirect other local revenue sources to fund the previously identified general fund initiatives. Eleven, the Department of Public Utilities is developing a program to assist individuals recently unemployed to the, due to the COVID-19 pandemic with their monthly city services bill, which is comprised of water, sewer, stormwater and waste management. Working with the Department of Human Services and Information Technology, Public Utilities is developing criteria and the appropriate technology platform for participation in the program with an implementation goal of July 1, 2020. The fee relief program totals $4 million and will be in place until the funding is exhausted. Once all program details have been finalized, information will be shared with the council and our citizens prior to implementation. Funding for this one-time program costs, consists of 2.4 million from the fund balance of the water and sewer fund and 1.6 million from the fund balance of the general fund. Number 12, provide 2 million to CIP project 4-059 Southern Rivers Watershed Site Acquisition Program in year one of the CIP. This is a new project in the FY 2021 CIP. This project is one of the strategies to reduce the impact of flooding in the southern part of our city. This appropriation will be supported through the use of fund balance from the general fund. Some city council members have requested reestablishment of part or all of the 2.5% pay increases originally included in the city manager's proposed budget. Before implementing compensation increases or other items, we recommend reviewing the FY 2021 revenue estimates in January of 2021 after the accounting records are finalized for revenue collection through December 31st, 2020. At that point, we should have a better understanding of the financial impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on our local economy as well as any federal state financial support that may be provided. Please note, if revenue decreases beyond estimates, additional city council action might be required to adjust this budget accordingly. The details for the funding sources and city council adjustments provided are reflected on attachment B, which you guys have. We want to thank the public who participate in the budget, public hearings to offer their comments on the FY 2021 operating budget and CIP, as well as staff for their efforts to provide answers to our various questions. If you have any questions, please contact us directly and it's, will be signed by the mayor and myself. So that's what I have for everyone. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Open up for more questions?
The next council member is Councilmember Guy Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I have joined in calling this special meeting primarily because of my concern about the revenue stream. I know we still have a number of issues to deal with on the expense side. They're not, some of them are collected comments and thoughts that are reflected in Mr. Wood's letter, or is in the mayor's letter that Mr. Wood just read into the record. But I'd prefer to focus our discussion, if we could, on the revenue side because I do think that is the first order of business. And I think it will make the, the more difficult job of, on the expense side, much flow, much better if we can agree on a revenue stream. I, every day, my concern about the length and depth of the recession that we are clearly in becomes stronger. And for two reasons. Number one, we're not back to business yet. And number two, the, it is clear that business is not going to return to normal, even when the switch goes on that businesses are allowed to open. They're going to be gradual, very gradual. Unemployment is going to remain at record levels. The loss of GDP in the second quarter is not going to be followed by a recovery, V-shaped recovery by any, anybody's standards. I think, I'm sure you could find an economist who would disagree with that, but certainly that is the consensus of everything I have read and listened to in the last few weeks. And Mike, I also, of course, am reading headlines that say, that are, have cities already making very significant layoffs of personnel, including public safety personnel. I realize that the mix of revenues for those cities can be quite different from ours and that a number of them are not in as good a financial condition as we are. But nonetheless, it, all of that together brings me to ask the staff and, and each other, are we really comfortable with a budget at the revenue levels that we are projecting? And if not, how should it be adjusted? And I would welcome comments from the city manager or Mr. Bradley or anyone else who can, would like to speak to this. I think, I'm just hoping we could have a robust discussion of the revenue side today. And as Mr. Moss suggested, I think trying to get into the expense side, both in terms of time, energy, and the natural order of things is not the greatest idea. I have no problem with people referencing it or including myself. But I hope the focus will be on the revenue side today. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. We also, as staff, have worried about the revenue. This has happened so quickly. So let's talk about fiscal year 20 first and some of the assumptions we made. And, and you got to remember, at this point, we had already received our December collections for real estate. Business license comes in in March. We had received all of that. Sales was really exceeding estimates. So through March, we felt really good where the, the position we were in. So for the remainder of the year, I think we were pretty conservative on our revenue estimates. For restaurant tax, if you recall, we assumed 25%. We, we got March data in for April and it exceeded that. I can't remember, it was 40 something. Not, not a lot, but it's doing better. Now, March wasn't the whole month yet, you know, it just started at that point. We only assumed 10% for hotel. Hotels definitely doing better than that, but we were concerned at the time about the restrictions in travel. We assumed 0% for amusement. Now, amusement tax goes totally to the TIP fund. So we just assumed nothing there. Sales, we assumed that the last two months of this year, we'd only get 75% of what we normally get. Even with that assumption, we basically met our estimates for this year because it was doing so well. So, you know, those revenues are split over a lot of different funds. But the big ones are the ones that Mr. Moss was talking about, the personal property and real estate that will come in now on August 1st, June 5th or August 1st. So we had seen similar data to what Mr. Moss had seen, so that unemployment could be as high as 20%. So we assumed that we would lose 20% of our personal property estimate for June, which would be about 16 and a half million dollars. For real estate, we assumed we wouldn't get 10% of it, which is $33 million. So for fiscal year 20, all that together, we, including some departmental revenue loss, we assumed we would lose $80 million, of which $65 million was in the general fund. So also keep in mind on real estate, you are going to get the real estate at some point generally because there'd be liens placed, placed on the property if, if, you know, the transaction occurs moving or selling the real estate. So, but our concern about assuming 10% loss was, you know, given the situat, excuse me, given the situation that it would be possible that the payment does not occur, occur in this accrual period of fiscal year 20. So that was really important to us to come up with those assumptions because it had an impact on what would be the ending fund balance for this year. When we presented the budget, the March 24th budget, and we put a lot of work into, we assumed that fund balance would be at about 10.3% of the following year's revenue. When the city manager revised his budget in that April 10th letter, we assumed a loss of $65 million of general fund revenue. So we had to back off of some things too. I think about $11 million or so of CIP projects that were funded by fund balance. And we assumed that the $5 million that we've been paying for our pay increases with vacancy savings. So the pay increase for 2.5% would be $10 million. We've assumed half of it would just be paid for vacancy savings. We wanted to make sure going forward that we didn't do that so we have some flexibility. But when we took all of that into account, we assumed that our fund balance now, and it was in the April 10th letter, would be 8.45%. So pretty significant loss of revenue, we believe, in fiscal year 20. So going forward into fiscal year 21, with that fund balance is kind of out there, we looked again at the revenue assumptions, especially for those consumer-related revenues. And we were kind of in line, I think, with what Mr. Tower was describing, that it wasn't going to be this immediate V-shaped curve that would come back in July. So we assumed those revenues would come back through December and that the economy would not recover fully really to about the beginning or at the end of this calendar year. So for example, we assumed sales would be 75% in the summer, go up to 80, 85, 90, 95, and by December would return to 100% of what you would have expected in monthly collections. Hotel, we assumed 50% for July, 60% of what you'd normally collect for August, which those are your big months. So that really has a big impact on what we think would happen with hotel tax. For meals, we only assumed 25% of, in July of what, of the transaction data because we assumed restaurants would have to get staffed again and get back on their feet, given that many of the, especially dine-in restaurants had to close down. So we also made other assumptions too going into next fiscal year. It's very possible that some of the real estate tax loss we have in fiscal year 20 could be recorded in fiscal year 21. So that could be a positive. We did not assume it like that, but I just wanted to mention that. We assumed that real estate, we wouldn't get, we would lose collections by 1%. And, you know, that's a loss of 7.5 million dollars. For personal property, we heard the same thing, that unemployment would get down to maybe 10%. And remember, most of personal property doesn't occur until May of 2021, basically a year from now. So at that point, we were thinking the economy would be more fully recovered, but we still assumed we'd lose 10% compared to what we originally projected on that. We also assumed BEPole, which is based on business income, would be down. So we also assumed that would go down as well. So all told, for next fiscal year, we assumed $70 million of loss. And that has an impact particularly in the TIP and TAP funds that were noted earlier. And the TIP fund, the revenue projections that we were showing was just covering debt service. So issues like beach maintenance, grooming of the beaches and picking up the trash, beach events in whatever form that that will be in next fiscal year. And a lot of those things wouldn't be able to be funded. So we knew in the April 10th letter, there was work to do to look at how you would mitigate the impact in those funds. I, I guess the good news is there's fund balance in those funds that allows some absorption of the impact. So that's kind of a overview of what our thought pattern was, that this would kind of go through the end of this calendar year. And we still think there'd be impacts to real estate, personal property and BEPole.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you have any follow-up question? Councilmember Tower? Councilmember John Moss?
Councilmember John Moss? Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Bradley. I'm looking at page 25 of the executive summary of the plan we received on the 25th of March, where it shows for the budget that we adopted of the adjusted budget, the current year real estate revenues that we collected was 605.8 million. I think you just referenced that you expected to collect, I thought you said 16, but maybe it was 17, those two numbers, but something less than 605.8 million, which was the appropriation we did for the adjusted budget. So when I turned to that resource management plan that you referenced in your discussion on page three, where it shows on March the 25th, the revenue estimate was 626,961,518. It was revised down by 7.5. That's money we never got yet. So that's not against the base. That's revenue in the future we hope to collect. It was reduced to 619.5 million, which is still $14 million higher than what you said we would actually collect in 21. In large part, I assume you're basing that on the increased book value on hotels and restaurants based on an income assessment and restaurants, whatnot, that was done and completed and booked for July 1st prior to the changed circumstances, which we all agreed take place. And when I say changed circumstances, and this is getting to the heart of trying to get a little bit better understanding, when you put all the numbers down, you can't see them writing, which is difficult. But as I mentioned, the CBO just released a report this week. And they're showing that for the year, we should expect negative GDP, 5.6%. I'm, they're sure there's some correlation between GDP and taxable revenues and transactions. So I, I hope that when we look at these numbers, we are still counting on actually collecting 14 million more dollars than we authorized and appropriated for the adjusted budget. But you're also acknowledging, we're not going to collect that either and might collect it in the future. We don't know. But that's a pretty big swing, whether it's 16 or 14. That's still an increase in getting, so I'm trying to understand how to, how you reconcile with negative GDP and you start looking at negative GDP, and you start looking at the impact of employment, and when the things roll out, and what businesses are telling you, what makes you think we're going to collect $14 million more dollars that we didn't even collect in '20?
Keep in mind, too, that we will eventually collect whatever we have in fiscal year 20 due to liens, but, you know, the land book is in place for fiscal year 21. So, the assessments, as the real estate assessor presented to council, I guess, back in late February or early March, are still in place for the upcoming fiscal year, and I think he was at, what, a 3.2, 3.3% assessment increase. So, with that in play, now, the only thing that we really do in the budget office is, and it's a much smaller part of that estimate, is how much is new construction going to be, and we get some of that info from the real estate assessor, and, you know, if there's going to be percentage collection that won't occur. And like I say, with real estate, you eventually get it, you know, in most cases. So, that was our thought, our thought pattern.
The next council member is Councilmember Jessica Abbott.
I, Mr. Bradley, I wanted to ask a clarifying question. I have a clarifying question about something you had said previously, and then, and then some questions about the assumptions you were making, but I want to make sure I heard you correctly, is you, are you anticipating that our, the income we'll be collecting through, you know, restaurants, hotels, amusement, sales tax, we're assuming in the proposed budget that those sales numbers will be back to normal?
Not initially, no. We're assuming a slow growth back. For example, in July, we only assumed 25% of the restaurant tax, and then by August, we assumed that it would get to 80% and then 85, and that is of what we thought we would be getting in those months, eventually getting to 100% in December. And we made similar assumptions with sales and hotel and amusement, some of the consumer-driven revenues, that it would not be there on July 1st, but would slowly grow back into them by the end of the calendar year.
I don't think I'm heard. Am I still on? I'm so sorry. Okay. I know you're not supposed to ask that. Okay, so, okay, so, but, but you do think December tax revenue will be what would have normally been collected, which I don't know that I agree with. I'm, I don't think people, I don't think we're going to have the December that we would normally have, particularly in sales. I think people maybe are going to be open to traveling again come December, but we don't have a lot to do in the winter time here anyway, so I'm not sure hotels and particularly resort restaurants will really be seeing an increase. So, I do have some concerns about that. I want, I also don't really think that we want to send the message that we're going to be taking liens against people's homes. I realize that you're just stating a factual reality, that that's what happens if you don't pay your real estate tax, but I think the message that we're not going to, that we're going to put a lien on someone's home because they fail to pay their real estate taxes, not really the message we want to be saying right, right now. But the other question I had specifically about commercial real estate, have we accounted for the change in need? I think some of the things that we're going to be seeing are efficiencies and how people do business, and I think there might even become a decrease in the need for commercial space. So, surely that'll have a impact on the market assess, the market rates for these buildings and properties. So, have we accounted for potentially a devaluing in our, our commercial real estate book, and have you done any kind of estimates on when we think that might occur?
Thank you, Ms. Abbott, and I appreciate your comment about the liens. I, I am very sensitive to the current situation and was just trying to state, you know, what happens with that tax. So, as far as commercial real estate, it's basically in place for next fiscal year. I think what you're getting at is that if this continues, when the real estate assessor revises his estimates for the following fiscal year, which you'll get in February of 2021, is when you would possibly see that. There is, you know, insulation in the real estate tax, in the sense that it's set for a year, and then, you know, that will be what the assessments are, and that's what the revenue will be collected on, and it's the following fiscal year where I think you'd see the impact, similar to what happened, you know, during the Great Recession, where I believe we had five years of revenue declining, or assessments declining during that period.
Well, I thank you, I appreciate it. I think, maybe I'm just concerned, I think, I think we might, I mean, obviously, I understand that the assessment won't necessarily be impacted, but I do think we maybe should start setting ourselves up to expect a significant decrease in our commercial book. I don't know how our residential will fare, but I, I know I've talked to several business owners who had planned expansions of their own businesses, and with COVID-19, they've realized that they don't actually need these larger buildings, and so what's happening is they're, they're choosing not to buy, or really deferring their plans long-term to expand, and so I think we're going to see, whether we like it or not, more people working from home, simply because I think a lot of our small businesses in particular are going to say, if I can run my office with all my employees sitting in their, in their own personal living rooms, then why should I pay for that commercial space? So, I do, I do worry that what we aren't doing today could affect us down the road. So, I, I guess my comments to the body, going back to the point of our discussion today, I don't think we're going to be back to normal in December. I hope we'll be close to normal, but I think there is wisdom in being overly cautious and not overextending ourselves so that we're not having a hard conversation in, during the holidays. You know, I think, I think we can be a little bit more cautious at this time, so that's what I have, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Tower go.
Councilmember Guy Tower?
Thank you, and Councilwoman Abbott was focusing where I was as well, Mr. Bradley, on the estimates for the revised monthly collections in sales, hotel, and meals. I just cannot, cannot look at that December column and see 100% and have any confidence in that. You said at one time, I believe, that you had relied on some forecast by folks at Old Dominion, is that correct?
Had published a report, and, you know, this is early on, probably three weeks ago, and talked about kind of what they saw as would probably happen, and more of a harder or a worse scenario, and we kind of leaned towards that. Now, what they didn't talk about at the time was duration, that I could find in the report, because, you know, remember, too, there was talk about, you know, this would be a one-month, two-month thing. So, even at that point, you know, just knowing what was going on, we did not want to make that assumption moving forward. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we planned for a longer, you know, drawn-out affair, and that's why, you know, it was important, because I'm glad you're having this discussion. I want it to be very clear in our assumptions, because I think that's important for city council, as you work through this, of what we were saying. And just one, one other thing I'll mention just real quick, part of what the city manager was trying to do when he put the budget, this revised budget, was to get flexibility moving forward. You know, by having that position freeze, you will not be, you know, we generally will not be hiring new employees, you know, there'll be exceptions, obviously, for public safety and other key positions. I was talking to finance today, they're now just starting to see the impact of that on our monthly payroll, which would, what be, what would be expected. Our human resource director mentioned in a meeting recently that, you know, maybe it'd be 30 people at a new employer orientation, and it's down to two. So, you're going to start seeing the impacts of that. You're also going to start seeing the impacts of us delaying essential, you know, this determination of what's an essential expenditure, non-essential. That is ongoing work. Finance has been working through, looking at all encumbrances, and those are contracts that have been dedicated, you know, to make sure that they're still valid. We do that every year, we're just doing that in advance now. So, and we've also looked at the CIP, it was mentioned in the vice mayor's letter to, in mayor's letter to, you know, delay a couple of projects, and we're looking at globally as well. That's a strategy, you know, these strategies are delay in the sense of letting us determine how long this is going to last. If it's, you know, through this next, into this calendar year, we didn't spend that money, and then you could move forward with those projects, or the bigger decision that may have to be made if this, you know, continues like it is, do we go ahead and reduce those CIP projects? And Mrs. Abbott, I know you had mentioned your questions. We just got that to the city manager right before this meeting, so hopefully we have a pretty comprehensive answer to you on what those CIP projects are.
Mr. Leahy?
I did want to clarify that the, on page three of the April 10 letter to council, where it says that the revenues would be at back to 100% by December, that is referring to the revenues that would have been expected in December, which obviously would be considerably less than the revenues that would be expected in July and August. So, it's 100% of a number that is already, we know that in the month of December, those taxes are much lower.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tower?
I would just say that I, I think the projections are ambitious even for the summer. I think the, I think they were probably made at a time before it had sunk in, certainly to me, and I'm sure to many others, that even, even assuming that we could reopen our beaches, for example, at the earlier part of the summer, the population of the beaches is going to be very different than what we're used to. We're not going to have events driving people here. We're not sure whether we want people here or not. We're not sure whether people want to go on vacation. We're not sure people can afford to go on vacation. It's very much up in the air, I agree, but what's not, seems to be not up in the air is that the damage that has already been done to our economy, the layoffs that have already occurred, the number of people that will not be called back to work because businesses will not be able to continue in, in business are enough to make these numbers, to me, higher than, I don't have numbers to put in here, but, and I realize, certainly, the city manager suggests, in December, we're talking about 100% of the normal lower revenues, but the whole assumption that we're going to be back to normal by the end of 2020 just seems to me to be something that we just can't accept. I can't, I just, my judgment is that number is too high, and that I would back the rest of this latter half of this year back down. And I would also, when we get to the expense side, we have to, I think Mr. Moss is right, that businesses are going to need, they're not, because these numbers aren't right for us, they're not right for the businesses that produce them, and they're going to have less ability going forward to hire people, to pay the taxes, and it's going to be enforced on them, whether they want it or not. It's not, the businesses will have no control over how we manage the beach, that's going to be up to us to do, and if we are allowed to open them, they're going to be, they're going to be very much restricted from what we're used to seeing in the beach time. And then, back to my original point, I just think we're in a recession, and I think it's going to be worse than 2008, 2009 myself. It's certainly going to be worse on the tourism industry. It's already worse on the tourist, it's already been a devastating losses, and, and the future losses are going to mount as well. So, we're going to have a lot of responsibilities to try to keep businesses open and jobs, jobs for folks to work at, and I just don't think any assumption that we're going to be back to normal by the end of this year is a reasonable one at this point.
I have one comment and one question. Mr. Bradley was correct, we cannot revisit the book value for July 1 of 2019, but the city council can, and I've confirmed this with the city attorney's office, we can extend the timeframe by which people can appeal their assessment, because we already shortened it to 31st July, and then we could make it 30 September or 15 October. People then could then take their experiences from March through June on the income method, reengage looking forward, and have a income discussion, and could look to re, have their commercial property, which is determined on an income basis, make their case for it to be reassessed, and he can make that adjustment retroactive to July 1 of 2020. So, we, the council, do have the opportunity, if we so choose, to give people more time to get the data and the empirical evidence, and looking forward to revisit the value of commercial property determined on an income basis. But he's correct, we can't look back to July 1. But I want to ask, when he did his expenditure assumption of revenue collection, because that's why I want to stay on the revenue collection side, what was the base of viable businesses that we now have that you assumed would still be in business? Because I want to share with you something I heard from a business person, a restaurant owner, and it was not at the oceanfront. In fact, it was in Gettysburg. He says, yes, you know, when I was getting ready to have to shut down, I gave away all my perishables, you know, and other stuff in the freezer, and I gave that stuff, you know, to my employees, you know? And I think you saw articles in the paper where many people did that. He says, he says, and this loan I can get, if I can get that loan or the grant, doesn't cover the recapitalization of my business. He says, so now, when I come about, if I even reopen, I got a lot of expenses, but I have to go out and I have to buy new food, I got to buy all this stuff, and guess what all the suppliers want? Cash. They want money. So, I'm interested to understand is, what was the denominator of businesses that we have today versus the numerator you think we're going to have when this thing comes its first phase one, as the governor calls it? How many of those people are really still here? And I only mention that because this gets back to this assumption, and it's just, this is a great report, I hope the staff reads it, but this just got this week, we're expecting the labor participation rate to decline by 5%. That's huge, nationwide, between the end of the first quarter and the third quarter of this year. That's not a little bit. And they're not expecting unemployment to go, will be 9.5% at the end of '21, that's December, more than a year from now. Gets to Mr. Guy's point is, the new normal is not the old normal, and the, and the way back is going to be entirely different, it's not a linear experience, it's not the financial crisis, it's not 9/11, this is a more fundamental restructuring taking place. I'd like to understand, how in your assumptions did you, did you put, because it takes establishments to make transactions, it takes people working to have income to make transactions, and since we draw from these markets that are having like, in a sense, even more because they're not so defense-dependent, so they even have more, you know, elastic response to the downturn, what makes us think that even the, the numbers that you have are, this will be my last question, because I don't believe these numbers, and you're not going to be able to convince me, but I would like to understand what business base you believe that we were going to have on the backside versus the business base we had on the front side to generate the revenues you're suggesting?
Thank you, Mr. Moss. So, I think you and Mr. Tower are raising the same things that we tried to figure out over the last five, six weeks. You know, we've never seen anything like this before, so how do you position the budget moving forward? And I did, I think, you know, what you've cited and Mr. Tower cited, is just start reading, and along with our staff, not just me, you know, what do we expect to happen? How long will this be, you know? Is it a V shape? Is it a U shape? There was talk today about it being a W shape. So, you know, and then we tried to base it on things that, you know, we thought would be out there. For instance, the personal property, I said that we would lose, not get 20% of it in June this year. That was based on what we thought unemployment would be, that 20% of the people wouldn't be able to pay it. That was based on what we thought unemployment would be, that 20% of the people wouldn't be able to pay it. Kind of made that, you know, the assumption that unemployment would stay high. So when it's due in May of next year, that same thing would happen. You know, we are assuming and hoping that our businesses are viable, and then they can come back. And hopefully, some of the initiatives that are being discussed to put more money into the tip and tap fund and try to advertise the great resort that we have gets that. You know, if people go out to eat a restaurant, if one's closed, they still may go to another one, and you'd still get the, the restaurant revenue. And, you know, same, you know, with hotel. You know, clearly, that's why we assumed lower hotel in July and August. Hope that's not true. But once again, all those, just the same things you have discussed, trying to, in the last five, six weeks, try to make sense of what's happening and move, you know, a budget for it that hopefully, you know, council can support. But, you know, just a couple of other caveats I would say. You know, we're talking about revenue, and I, and I appreciate that. But a lot of how we can mitigate this is being conservative on, you know, expending money. And having that position freeze in place will help. If revenue estimates are less than what we expect, then we can all, you know, we got that position freeze, and hopefully, those savings will help. Not using $5 million in attrition funding to, to pay for something should help us as well. So that's kind of the, you know, things we're thinking about. The other big unknown right now that, you know, we've been just trying to get our hands around is what will happen with stimulus money. There is talk that we could get some from Virginia through the current stimulus that's happened. And then, you know, there's an article in the paper this morning where Congress may revisit stimulus money for state and local government. So I appreciate both your concerns. It is a trying time. And, you know, we're always respectful and mindful that it's having an impact on our citizens.
Councilmember Barbara Henley.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see the light. I'm hoping to see the light at some point here, and I think that's what we're all trying to do today. There's so many unknowns. And we are being called to have to act with a lot of unknowns. And so trying to put everything in perspective, I think, is really important. But as I see it, the, the budget, when we're talking about folks having difficulty paying their taxes that will normally come due in June, but now they have a couple of more months to, to pay that real estate and personal property tax, that's in the current year's budget. That's not what we're talking about adopting now. So that budget rate is already established. And the budget rates that we're talking about in this budget will not come due for real estate until December or the first half, and then, of course, the personal property tax in the second half a year from now. So there's quite a lot of time for these two taxes, at least, before they take effect. And I think as we are going forward, this budget is going to be one that we're going to have to continuously be revisiting. I believe the state plans to revisit the state budget in a couple of months in the summer, and I think that's what we're going to have to do. I was trying to recall our processes during the '08, '09 recession. And I guess that's 10 years ago now, but it seems like it happened not too long ago, and we learned a lot of lessons from it, because that turned out to be a much longer recession and a much longer recovery than we had hoped at the beginning. But it seems to me that during that time, we were having every few weeks, monthly at the most, looking at what the revenue sources, how they were coming in, whether they were meeting projections, and whether the expenditures, where those lines are. As a matter of fact, we still get those updates, because we learned at that time that was important, that we, we keep abreast of those things. And then we were able to adjust if the revenue was not coming in as we had proposed, what we could do. And I would, would like for Mr. Bradley to address what he sees as our opportunities for going forward once we get into this budget, July 1, and how you think we should be proceeding to continuously examine what we adopt and how we might make adjustments going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. And you're right, I, you know, we are as concerned, and we want to make sure that we maintain the great financial position that we've been known for, which allows us hopefully to have low taxes and provide great services. So to me, the first big decision point is going to become, is going to happen in mid-August. That's when the books close for fiscal year '20. And then we will be able to see, did we meet our fund balance projection that we had, that 8.45% that's in the April 10th letter? And I think that will be a, a huge key. At that point, if we didn't do well, then I do think we have to come back and engage council about next steps. Certainly, at that point, we could look at the CIP and determine, you know, what kind of impacts. You know, we've delayed expenditures. That delay has helped us to at least put those expenditures aside, and maybe we have to decide at that point if we should move forward with some of them. You know, so that will be a critical moment. There are contracts and things in the operating budget that are being deferred right now. So the idea, usually there would be a, usually they would be under contract, they would be encumbered in our financial system, and they would automatically be carried forward into the new year. But we also have that carryforward process that council's probably familiar with in September, usually when you see it. We'll have to look at that point and say, hey, these were the things we delayed. Can we move them forward, or maybe we can't? And at that point, they just drop out of the budget. From that point on, I think, you know, I mean, we're going to be monthly no matter what. We have to look at this, our budget monthly. See where we're at, reports back to council, very thorough meetings where council can ask whatever questions. And to me, the next big moment, you know, as we go through the first, the last part of this calendar year and the first part of next fiscal year, is the real estate collection on December 5. And, you know, by January, we'll have a good feel, I think, for the very questions that are being raised. Was this something that lasted through December, or was this something that continued onward? So that might be another key part of when we look at. So those are just my mind, Mrs. Henley, of some of the key things we got to look at going forward.
Councilmember Henley. Councilmember John Moss.
This will be my last question on expenditure, I mean, on revenues, because I think, but I, when we get what we believe that top revenue answer is, what's obvious in the current process that we didn't pay our citizens first. No one asked the question, oh, what tax revenue do we want to provide? And therefore, have to bring our revenue line down, because they're just as hard-pressed, and they're not getting someone made to pay their health insurance and keep their premiums constant, or they might not be working, they might not be able to afford to open their business. So when, when we're looking at what the revenue line, whatever it is, and let's take the revenue that you believe we're going to collect, which I don't believe in, it's like the last people in line were the people who pay. Everybody who spoke at that meeting, nine out of, seven out of nine said, we need tax relief. We need financial help. And the other people spoke about ads. Well, the ads happened, but philosophically, we treat the city in this particular process as it's an entity unto itself, and it's first in line to what it collects. When in fact, we have an option and the ability to say, we don't want to collect that, and because we want to be more empathetic, as we should be to the people who own the place, and take some risk and give some money back so those people can survive. And I do agree with you when you said, because this year's budget does matter, because it determines what the earnings fund balance is. But if we are uncertain about it, then we shouldn't be using it to balance whatever revenue line we have. That money should go into, some call it, city council underperformance insurance fund on revenue, and set it aside, and not even spend it, because we all agree there's uncertainty as to whether we're going to collect it or not. So why would we build a budget on it? Likewise, why would we provide one-time tax relief on it? So I think when we're looking at revenues, part of the revenue discussion is, once we agree on what it is, how much of the revenue that we believe that we are collecting that we want to return in whatever fashion it is, so that our businesses and residents too can survive on the other side? And I, that discussion never happens. There is not a single bit of analysis in here, in any of this stuff, that talks about what would be the fiscal benefit, because we can't print money, we don't have any monetary policy like the Fed, but the fiscal stimulus we could provide by collecting less revenue than we, than you're, than, that's projecting, and returning that back to the people who earned it. So that's just a commentary. But if there's six people who, who believe these revenues are happening, then I guess, you know, our discussion here on the, on the, on the revenue thing is, becomes moot. I hope there's not, because I don't believe these numbers for one minute. And I don't think anyone out there who ran a business, or who's out there in the financial world or a hedge fund, would look at that line there and say, yep, that's all possible. That's going to happen. It just defies the larger macro movements in the larger economy of which we are a part. And I think it's not conservative, and we're creating no margin to work with. And, and now we're going to, and if we're going to have monthly meetings, we might as well just authorize a budget for the year, and then have monthly appropriations, which we legally can do. We, we have to have a budget plan adopted, but then we appropriate budgets on a rolling 60-day basis. And so that's all the money that the manager has to spend. That's, that's, if we really believe it's that dynamic, it probably is. But that's just my observations.
Councilmember Tower, did you have additional questions or comments?
I do. I just wanted to make one more comment on the, because I, in my, this is the first time I've been through the full budget process, and I wasn't sure whether to speak about the revenue offsets. I, I fully intend to support some revenue tax relief for citizens and businesses. I think it's, I think it's, it's a necessary, particularly on the business side, I'm not, I don't want to slight the individuals, but I have been really just so overwhelmed with folks losing their jobs in this industry. And there's no, they're not going to be any jobs to go back to unless we give some relief to some of these folks. The smaller businesses and the less, most vulnerable citizens are the ones that need the relief, and that, and they need targeted relief, and we need to figure out a way to do that for them. So I don't think there's any doubt that we will be talking about further tax relief.
Are there any other council members with questions or comments? Sorry, Councilmember Jessica Abbott.
I guess at this point, I'm really eager to hear from the rest of my colleagues. I, I kind of like the idea of maybe not appropriating all of this at once. I could, feel like I could get behind that. I don't know where we all are. Obviously, we've heard from John and Guy and Councilwoman Henley. So I really hope we can engage everybody, if not at this meeting, at another one. Because I really, I do think we need to, we needed to come to a decision on the revenue. I was hoping we could do that today. Like I said in my previous comment, I don't think that we'll be up back and running 100% come December, even if we are anticipating previous year's Decembers. I, I think, I think it's going to be bigger. And then, and to the comment that Guy made towards the end about, we, we need to provide relief to residents. We really do. I know that there are people really hurting right now, and that's only going to get worse. And, and I, and I want to support a plan that helps businesses and residents, because a lot of our business owners are residents too. So I think we need to be holistic in that, in that approach. But I don't want to consume all of the meetings. So I hope, I hope everybody else has comments as well.
Any additional council members with comments and/or questions? If you raise your virtual hand. Mayor, I do not have anybody raising their hand, their virtual hand, to make any additional comments or with questions.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to thank everybody for their participation today. I really think that we all share the frustration of the, the great unknowns that are out there these days. You know, how do we move forward? And at this point, I really think that a lot of the indications and conversations we had today, as, you know, we go forward in our process, is that this is going to be an ongoing and dynamic process for us each month, that where we're going to have to be proactive and reactive based on the situations as they come forward. So once again, I think, you know, this was a good discussion, and the unknowns are confounding, you know, right now. And I think right now, also, it's mission essential at this point that we start getting open again. I've been focused on this for a better part of a couple of weeks now. I did, you all received the letter I sent to the governor requesting, you know, a limited opening of the beach. And as a matter of fact, I'm going to be in on a conference call with the, I'm sorry, with the governor tomorrow, to hopefully, you know, at least get the beach open on a limited basis, monitored, and, you know, a slow opening that still provides the safety and all of the precautions going forward. So, you know, you know, but, you know, that remains to be seen. And then hopefully, on May 8th, or before, we might be able to get some of our businesses open.
I'm sorry, Mayor, so there are a couple of additional comments from councilmembers.
Okay, go ahead in that, and I'll finish my comments.
No, go ahead. I just wanted, just want you to adjourn.
And I'll just say that, you know, you know, we will have further discussions on this as a body, you know, to come to, you know, to, to take on this great challenge that we have as a council in a challenging time. You know, be assured that, you know, we will be welcoming all input from council members, from the public. But also, I think we, as was emphasized, we have to find those methods that help those individuals and those businesses, especially the small businesses, that are in jeopardy right now, you know, through whatever means possible we can have to, to help the, you know, to make sure they remain a vital, vital part of our community and the great city of Virginia Beach. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sabrina Wooton, and she is on audio conference, so we'll.
Welcome, Sabrina.
Yes, hi. I, I would like to first thank councilmembers Moss and Tower and Abbott for putting this special session together today. And I did mention to Councilmember Moss that this is something, I certainly support more dialogue on the budget. And I've mentioned in my comments on Tuesday during our meeting that I want to make sure that we're approaching this whole process with equity. And that means making sure that we're assisting those, you know, everyone who's in need. And in my opinion, that certainly means our residents. And so I am very attuned to the comments that I've heard from the public about bringing relief to them during this time. And I'm very sensitive to that need, because I know that many are not working, and they're grappling with bills that need to be. many are not working, and they're grappling with bills that need to be paid. And so I'm willing to continue to go through this process, digest all the information that I have received to date, and also interact with the staff to see how we can provide some type of relief to our residents. And I'd like to see what that looks like. And so just want to make sure that council knows that I am certainly in the affirmative to assuring and making sure that we address relief for our residents, because they need it as well. And again, want to say thank you to the council members for providing this time for a very important matter. Thank you.
Councilmember John Moss?
First of all, I want to thank all my peers for participating in the special meeting that councilmembers Abbott, Tower, and myself called. Certainly didn't achieve the objective that I hoped that we could have achieved today, which was actually a realistic revenue projection. I think the public is better educated. I think all of us are better educated. I do not believe we are on a timeline that allows us to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities to adopt the budget on the 12th of May unless we have a lot more workshops, and we might have more special sessions called by members of council if we can't get a more responsible timeline that allows us to really do the heavy lifting and make the hard choices to get there. And we haven't done that today, but maybe that's a little bit ambitious, because a lot of people, first time to this process, appreciate very much Sabrina's remarks that we, and Mr. Tower's remarks about targeted relief, and what Mrs. Abbott said. But I want the public who's watching today, that we made no material guidance direction that we're going to be doing something substantially different than what the inertia of this reconciliation letter represents, which is a slight modification to the 10 April and the 25 March budget submission, which is at all not responsive to the expectations that I've heard from business community and from residents. Now, I may have a skewed and not statistically representative sample, but I don't think this cuts it, so I don't want anything to walk away thinking that this is something that I could support, I could not. But I do look forward to us having more discussions. And I hope, Mr. Mayor, that we could make an arrangement, that we could go to Building 19, which is that old juvenile court building, where we used to assemble, you know, the United Nations of the School Board and the City Council together. I think that room can be configured so that all of us could be six feet apart, and that we could have, you know, butcher block, whatever, that we could have the kind of discussion that this virtual thing doesn't really permit, but also comply with all the social distancing rules, so that we could get to there. And I don't know that, I think that would work better. I think this is a format that doesn't engender the same type of interactive collaboration and finding consensus at that kind of an arrangement. And I do think the physical space is probably there that we could meet that, and the public could at least participate as much as they do now, but we would have a chance to gauge the body language and have a more interactive conversation. So I know we have a meeting on the 5th of May, maybe we can make that happen on 5th of May and allocate some real time to this, because I don't think we're going to, we're going to walk away on May 5th with the answer either, but we need to have time to have more discussion. And I thank everyone for their kind attention to the stuff we put out, and I think everyone has been enriched by the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Moss, I think it's a great idea that we should try to, try to get together physically as much as possible in the near future, and hopefully with some relaxation, hopefully forthcoming from the governor, which I'm really praying for. We're looking at May 8, at perhaps some loosening and, you know, getting back as best we can. But I think the observation that we still maintain to the public that, and just show that we are practicing safe get-togethers, I think that's a start. We have to start coming back.
Councilmember Aaron Rouse?
Good evening. It has been very interesting to get everyone's points and perspectives on the budget. I think everyone has some valid and some incredible reasonings on how to move forward. You know, I understand we would like to get together physically and be there in each other's presence and talk about, further discuss the budget and most other things, but I think we have to adapt to our current situation. I know we can't discuss other matters, but, you know, we need to aggressively move forward finding a city manager. You know, we, our police chief just retired. We need to move forward and discuss that, even though that's a city manager hire, but we need to adapt to our current situation. One of the things that, as far as a plan and going forth for some direction for our staff, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to overstep my boundaries at all, but I think it would be, you know, incumbent upon us to give them directives to find tax relief for our businesses and residents first and foremost, figure out what it looks like operating, whether that's on a monthly basis or appropriations or a quarterly basis, because there's so much unknown as far as revenues and our revenue streams and what we'll be able to take in. I agree earlier with my colleagues, I think 100% of, capturing 100% of revenue in December and even 80% in August is optimistic, and I appreciate that, but it's just not more realistic. So I think we should, again, number one, find tax relief for our business and residents. I'd like to understand more about what it looks like, Mr. Bradley and Mr. Leahy, if we just freeze real estate tax assessments from 2019. If we froze that, what would that look like? Again, operate on a quarterly basis by appropriated money monthly. And then from a council standpoint, we should meet at least twice a week going forward, at least twice a week going forward throughout COVID to get an understanding of where our expenditures are, where we are in the budget, and what we look forward to. Another key, interesting fact to keep in mind is, is not so much where are we now, it's where we're going to be once the pandemic is over. And we have to make sure we put ourselves in a position to rebound strongly, because I guarantee you, whether you're Myrtle Beach, or Charlotte, or Northern Virginia, or any other locality, the market is going to become extremely competitive and aggressive, and we have to make sure we're in a position to take advantage of that. That's my comments today. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jim Wood?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments specifically as people were making them in reference to the reconciliation proposal that we have before us. And I think based on a couple of things that I've heard, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Ms. Henley mentioned earlier about when we went through the Great Recession with the monthly updates that have now slipped to quarterly updates because things are better, and obviously, the first line of the second paragraph of this reconciliation letter does state that the city manager will provide monthly updates to this. I think it's important that we do seek relief for businesses and residents, but I think it needs to be done in the right way, in a way that's meaningful, and not in a way that's just symbolic. And I think a lot of these things might sound good, but might not be meaningful for a bottom line. You know, I recognize that Mr. Moss is not in favor of the sentiments in this reconciliation letter, but in my mind, I think that this is a good way to move the process forward. I think it's a good way to get us on a monthly basis where we can make these changes, where we can enact relief as needed, we can make adjustments. I don't know that I like the idea of a 60-day cycle, because I think that puts the city manager, and frankly, a new city manager, in a position of, that might not be, that might not be ideal. You know, I recognize that there are questions, and none of us have the answer in terms of what the revenues are going to be. We, you know, we can control the expenditures to a great degree, but we don't know what revenues are going to be as we move forward. But I think we need to have some confidence in our staff. You know, we've got staff that have been doing this for a long time, they've been through a lot of economic upturns and downturns. We've got some decent modeling and projections, and I just would remind the council that our, that our staff is recognized not only by their peers in government accounting, but also by the private sectors as being quite good at this sort of thing. So, you know, not saying that they're not going to be wrong, because I think there will be wrong projections. I mean, I think that's what's going to happen here. But I would really encourage my colleagues to take a look at this reconciliation proposal again, and look at it in light of a way to move forward with the consensus, and that understanding that every month, we are going to have reports on how we're performing, key performance indicators, so that we can make adjustments a lot more rapidly than we can on a quarterly basis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Tower, did you have additional comments or questions? No. Mayor Dyer, that seems to be all the comments or questions. I don't see anyone else's virtual hand being raised.
Thank you. I think one thing is pretty obvious, that council has a lot of work ahead of us. We got to get through this budget process, and we will do the discussions and deliberations that we find confidence in the process ourselves as council members and the public. We also have a significant backlog of a lot of things that we have been unable to accomplish. And I think we're going to, we all should agree that, you know, the summer break is not in order. We're going to be needed to be out there and vigilant. The important thing going forward is that there is going to be ongoing monitoring of all the economic situations that are going to be out there, what we're going to be confronted. Once again, there are so many unknowns that we're going to have to confront month by month, maybe even week by week, but we will come together, and we will deal with this, and we will come out stronger and better. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1762.41][1762.41][music]